And Mr. Mayor, we have started recording now, so you are free to start the regular evening session.
Okay, you want to put up the, uh, get the flag available?
Uh, yes, I can. Give me one second.
All right, so I will call this regular session to order. Today is Wednesday, June 17th, and the time is 7:08 PM. I will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Okay, so now we will open it up to visitor comments. Is there anybody out there? Visitor comments? You could tag Matt or wave or whatever. Okay? Patrick?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, so I just wanted to make a couple of comments or observations in regard to the discussions at the work session this afternoon. And first, a couple, I did hear a comment from, I believe it was Counselor Topaz referring to riots in regard, um, and the mayor regarding, referring to protests as illegal. Now, I don't know about what that, I have no firsthand knowledge of what is going on across the country, but specifically in regards to what happened here in St. Helens two weeks ago. That was, it was neither, not even near a riot, and nor do I believe that it was illegal. Uh, and there's been many opinions given by that on a number of, number of levels.
Well, I, I, and you kind of put those two together, and I just wanted to clarify that governor's orders are governor's orders and they are illegal right at this point.
Uh, so I'm, I'm, I'm trying to exercise my right to make comments now. I'm not able beyond this time to interrupt or respond to Counselor for staff statements. Thank you. Yes, I, I, the governor has provided guidelines. I, the other comment I did want to make is that I was a, I, little concerned sometimes at work sessions where sometimes decisions are, are made that perhaps could benefit from a brief pause or some consideration and discussion and, and action at the regular session. The example I'd like to give, um, sorry, I got blanked out somehow.
Uh, Patrick, I turned off, you were starting to stutter and freeze up, so I turned off your video out to hopefully improve quality.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
It's not personal.
No, no, I, I got a haircut and, uh, no. The, um, I think there are some decisions certainly like the ones this afternoon where you were discussing the process for hiring a public works, uh, new public works director. Certainly something that is, you know, kind of internal, the council talk about. I don't think there needs to be much public involvement or comment about, about that. Another was the giving the go-ahead to Margaret in regards to spending some money on the repairs at the library. I do think though that a different issue has to do with the discussion around the Lumina nights. And that, uh, you know, I followed the discussion and I, I appreciated hearing the different points of, of view. But I also think that since this is going to have, this is something that really will have an impact on the larger community. That perhaps even if it's just a few hours, allowing some time from the afternoon session to the evening session for people to weigh in on, on the decision that being, being made. And that, uh, that, yes, I'm sure that this could be like, in, as decisions as soon as possible. That there are some questions perhaps or consideration that could have been thought over or considered, you know, and then making that decision at this current meeting or slightly later. And, and the reason I say that is because it is a, a decision for a, an event that will potentially bring thousands of visitors. Yes, they'll be in their cars, thousands of visitors to our community. Um, but be, um, but beyond that, and we are following the COVID guidelines. It wasn't clear to me that Ms. Curry, it wasn't, just wasn't clear to me, maybe she had done this, had talked through logistics with city staff. And city staff had been involved in a lot of this in terms of preparation, traffic control, um, and, and those sorts of, those sorts of things. So if I have one concern about the Lumina nights, it isn't so much people coming and driving through and remaining in their, their cars, but I do hope that full deci-, you know, before a final decision is made, that there's a real clear plan of action regarding some of the logistics involved in that. And so that's why I would just suggest at times, there might be some decisions that, yes, you're not required to, the way, it's not like voting on an ordinance, a city ordinance, but yet it does have a wider community impact that I think would appear to give a little bit more cause or for consideration deliberation before acting on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Mayor, I do not see any at this time.
Okay, start up the deliberation, appeal of variance for certain lots in Emerald subdivision. So, new questions from Council for Staff on this deliberation?
I had a question for Jenny.
Yes.
Um, I got the, the letter, um, the letter of opposed. Did the applicant get the letters opposed?
Uh, yes, I sent Al Peterson's letter to Lennar.
Okay, and then I have another question. What is the standard lot coverage? Is there a standard lot coverage or does it vary from community to community?
It varies, yeah. In St. Helens, the standard is 35% for R5 and R7, for the two zones that this property was at one time.
I mean, isn't it true that in a lot of communities, as they do infill, they have greater lot coverage?
Uh, I haven't heard a specific for infill.
I mean, just like higher density housing, they just have less yard.
Sure, yeah. In a city like Portland, the lot coverage standards vary drastically.
Fail them.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and then, uh, the other question they have, is it true that applicants stated that after somebody buys the house and they live there and they decide they're going to add, you know, a hand cave on the back, that they can request a variance for 5%, no questions asked? It doesn't even have a hearing. Is that true in our code?
So, yes, we do have a, a section of our code that allows for a 5% increase, but it starts from the base value. It starts from 35%, so you don't just get to keep adding five and five.
No, my, my question is if somebody had a tiny house built, not really a tiny house.
Sure.
You know, if they had a house built that say maybe didn't have a separate laundry room, two weeks after they got it from Lennar, they could add the laundry room without ever having a hearing at all. Do you know what I'm saying? It would fit within the window.
Are you saying it's on a lot that we've granted a lot coverage variance to already?
No, I'm saying that if they need the variance, if they are within the coverage, a homeowner can add 5%.
Yes.
Without even a hearing. And how, how often is it that 2% and 3% variances are offered just as a, as trying to neighborhood easing to allow them to have different plans? How often do planning commissions just sign off on those?
Yeah.
Variance is small as some of these, I mean, the 7% is one thing, but some of these are under four.
Yes, no, that's a good point, and I think it's important to put that 5% in context with what is granted without a variance normally.
I'm just trying to have perspective because they, the first person that came through, I was surprised, me as a counselor, it did not get appealed to us, it was not our choice, that they just, there was almost no discussion and they just got the 12. And so it was surprising to me that there was no even consideration of pulling off the two big ones. Say, you know, we just can't go over the five, gotta hold it under this window, that they just rejected all of them. So that was surprising to me that there was no, you know, as a council, we're always encouraging our staff and staff to be business friendly, to be development friendly without giving away the store. So I mean, that's why I was just surprised at that. So I just was asking for your feedback on that.
Yes, yeah.
What was the, uh, what was the commission vote? Was it close and was it a somewhat of a heated argument? Or was it just unanimous and did it go on for time, a lot of time? And people got impatient and just like Jenny was saying, just kind of like, you know, voted it all, all together and that was it? Because that surprised me as well.
One commissioner attempted to have a conversation and a motion was made and passed just in minutes.
Yeah, I would, I would add to that, that one commissioner was in support and it wasn't an easy decision, but they would support approving all of them. And then one commissioner voiced that they were on the fence.
And I want to, okay, I've got it. I've got a clear picture of how, how the, not a clear, a vague picture, I should say, of how the planning commission came about to achieving their, their vote and their decision. But Jenny, how about you?
I'm not allowed to participate. I'm not allowed to participate in a deliberation.
So, no, no, I'm talking about, I'm talking to Jenny.
Okay.
Jenny, how about, Jenny, how, how about you? How did you come up on your staff? With the staff, how did you come up with that, your recommendation?
Yeah, I mean, I thought that this was a reasonable request when I read through their application. And that's why staff's recommendation was for approval. The planning commission was looking at the subdivision as a whole and thought that this was too many for the entire subdivision. They were trying to say, well, where do we draw the line? Where do we eventually stop approving variances? And they, they drew the line at Richmond's approval. They said 12 is enough for this subdivision ultimately.
Okay, thank you.
Jenny, uh, I assume these houses are pre-planned and put on these lots. They have a catalog of houses or house designs and they put this thing on the lot. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, I think this, that would have been a good question for Lennar, but yes, that's my understanding is that they have homes that they place on lots and they use those models in other communities as well.
Yeah, he testified to that, yeah.
I, I'm trying to, you know, one of the things when I look at the whole development, we're starting to get the place to look like a cookie cutter. And if I'm using the same house plan over and over again in the area, I'm losing the flavor of St. Helens. And the fact that it may be a 1% or 2% or 10%, uh, the fact that I'm being shoved into with a standard design rather than a St. Helens design. Could you take two foot off one side of the house? No, they didn't want to do that. They wanted to use a standard house. I saw no flexibility with them. They want to do only what they want to do. And when the planning commission, I assumed, looked at the variance, the whole story, they looked at, oh, we did this before, we can't do anymore. So if you keep, well, we got this, and then two days later we go, we got this. We only, I mean, I heard too many numbers and then I heard, well, we can't do anything until the place is sold. Then we do the work. I mean, these people ought to be more professional than that. I really can't buy the fact that they don't know what's going on. I really find that absolutely fascinatingly impossible.
But there was a couple of points made, but I, I want to point out Counselor Topaz that architectural style is not a criteria for a variance. So the cookie cutter argument isn't really valid in this case. You made other points there, but I just, I want to point that out.
Yeah, I'm well aware of that, uh, but it, it's a fact that we got rid of some of the cookie cutters that we stayed at the original, that we don't want to have a variance, even if it's a half a percent.
We got rid of five of them. Keep it off a quiet. Hmm? Your lot, keep it off a quiet. Talking to you, Keith.
I, I don't think it's a big enough to worry about. Given the variance, my only concern is, is that what are we going to do when the next person walks in the door and wants one?
Yeah, and I think this is a good time to talk about one of the conditions. If, if you want to grant the variances, the commission was concerned that another applicant would come in and ask for five more variances. And so we tried to craft a condition that would not allow for another applicant in the future to come in and ask for additional lot coverage variances for new development. So if a current property owner, 10 years down the road, wanted to apply for a lot coverage variance for a lot that's already developed, they could, but for new development, we've placed a condition in there if council wants to consider that. Um, I will note that Wayne Weigant, the owner of the lots, was very against a condition that would limit his future property rights because he may end up with these lots in the future. There may be some residual lots owned by him. So that's a condition that the council could choose to include if you grant them no more. But that's something that you can consider.
Um, so my question to you is this, is, there was brought up about the 5% by Jenny as well. That person, what is our lot coverage? It's 35%. Are we, is that pretty standard statewide? I mean, I'm just wondering where we are compared to others. I just want to know for my own.
Yeah, I mean, as part of this effort, I didn't research other communities, so I don't feel prepared to answer that. I can tell you, I know for bigger cities, it's definitely higher. Um, I, I don't know what like the city of Scappus has for their lot coverage. I can tell you our apartment residential zone has 50% lot coverage. Um, I can also tell you for R5, this very zoning, we allow 50% lot coverage for townhomes. So if the same builder wanted to build row homes, they could go up to 50% in this very district without a variance. So I think, you know, 35 does kind of seem low.
A building that I passed and it had turnabouts, and I remember looking down the lots and they must have been 30 foot wide. And those houses were, it was really clean and neat, but they were packed in there.
Yeah, well, and they also have housing affordability issues, so they're trying to pack as much housing on those lots as possible.
Hey, uh, so, anybody else got anything they want to talk to staff about? Hey, well, now's the decision time. Um, I'm going to ask, who is in favor of, uh, accepting the, the, who's, somebody want to make a motion? Do I have to make a motion on deliberation? Does somebody else?
I can make, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
You know, I'll motion that we grant Lennar eight lots with no more conditions added on for the lots in Emerald Meadows subdivision.
Can I ask a clarifying question on the motion?
Yes, eight lots of the variance.
So reverse the commission's decision, grant all eight variances. Do you want the condition in there that no additional lot?
No additional conditions, right. Add it on, like you were saying.
Okay, so, so a new property owner can't come in to build a new home with a lot coverage variance?
Right.
Like to be.
What about our code? What about our code that says a homeowner should do that, not a developer?
Yeah, so the way the condition is written is it says, "No further variances for building or structure coverage for new single detached family dwellings shall be allowed in the Emerald Meadows subdivision." So it's for vacant land, new homes. So if it's not a home already on it, a builder or a property owner could add on to their home and, and receive a variance.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, so going back to my old one about what if somebody comes in and they meet all of the restrictions they need for the variance?
For, for vacant land?
Yeah, for, for, for one of the other lots. Yeah, down, down the road, somebody comes in and they meet all the, all the, everything they need to meet for the variance, but we don't give it to them. Just because we gave it, we gave away so many to begin with.
Yeah, it's a good question. I mean, it's a question for council to consider.
Oh, it's a question, they, they, they'd have to go to the planning commission, correct?
Yeah, so the way.
Yeah, so, I mean, they'd have to go through the steps.
But, but you're worse, we're putting a caveat that no more is allowed, period.
Well, just in that subdivision, because it's already.
That's what I'm talking about, that subdivision.
I know. It's actually up to the city planner if it's an individually owned lot. Could make that call, or Jenny could make that call. It doesn't have to be the commission. Is that correct?
Well, I think the way we would say it is they couldn't meet the criteria because we have this condition that says no variances for lot coverage for vacant land can be allowed. So they would just, we would deny the variance based on this condition.
We basically already had that with the first group. These people came in a second time. They want some other things added on. So if someone else comes in, why can't they say, well, you added on to the first add-on, I'm going to add on there? Argument goes on to forever.
Yep, right, so.
Now, or you basically continue it forever.
So this puts a, by not granting further conditions, this puts an end to it.
That's correct.
That's what I, that's what the nature of my motion was, without granting further conditions.
I have a problem with the 7%er though. The one that is 7% over, that was the only outlier I had on the proposal. Cause there's one that 7 point something, and it's like, I'm figuring the first builder didn't use five. These guys have eight. So it's like if you, you're only giving, you know, a couple additional because you have five that are hanging out there. And if you take off that top one, that only leaves, that leaves seven, so you're only giving two additional variances. You said, I'm saying, Jenny?
Yep, that makes sense. Um, I can share the table just for everyone else.
I just wanted to have everybody look at the table, because it's like you look at the percents and see how people feel. I mean, I won't hold out, but I just want to have the conversation. I mean, staff does the table for a reason.
Yeah, the actual, actual staff recommendation was for all this to be approved originally. I listened to all the testimony. I heard all. Um, also, you can put a duplex on this and have 50% coverage. In state law, actually, you could. Is that correct? Jenny, is that correct? 50%?
Let me look real quick. I, I know attached single family dwellings have a 50%, but let me look.
I thought you said townhomes could be.
She's looking.
Attached, yep, townhomes can. Um, so duplexes minimum lot size is 5,800 square feet. So a lot of these lots would not meet the duplex minimum lot size in this district, so it's a moot point.
Uh, so that's by state statute, because then the state opened up.
This is our local code for minimum lot size for a duplex.
How does that coincide with the state statute that says all zones now have to accept duplex?
We can still set minimum lot sizes for duplexes. We still allow duplexes. Yeah, there's just a minimum lot size associated.
Okay. I had a motion on the table and we are starting to talk about clarification, and I think we're still talking about clarification. I, but I'm not certain, but it hasn't been seconded to, uh, to really get down to that yet. But does a motion die then?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve the eight variances and not allow any more in Emerald Meadows. That's what you guys, that was your motion stated.
And the eight excludes V620, which is lot 66.
Which is seven.
We're removing that.
So why don't we leave that one open for a potential future one? The staff recommendation. Okay, so a motion's been made. Is it eight or is it seven? Seven?
So they were originally requesting nine and now it's eight.
Okay, my motion was eight.
Okay.
No, you have to stay with a single owner of this request. You can't have maybe another owner. Let's make sure that it only concludes with a more.
That's what this table does. It ties them to, not only Lennar, but these specific single level models can only be used by these variances. So they're tied to this team here on this table.
Got it.
I, I would, I would make a comment, and this is Jacob, a city planner. So theoretically, Lennar could sell it and a different builder could build a Carlton or Trenton. It restricts it to the house plan. Now, other builders don't necessarily have those, so kind of by default, it rules them out. But technically, a different builder could come in and build the exact same plan. So it's per, it's by, it's by the model, because that's the model that was presented and how all the other, um, conditions or criteria were met, focusing on those models.
Thank you.
Okay, so a motion's been made.
And I ask a question to Jacob. On this property that was, we're talking about with a particular model, I have another builder come in. Another type of house. Is he still under the variance or is this, the variance on this property totally moved?
A different builder with a different house, these variances would, would not work for them. In the record, the Carlton and Trenton floor and house plans are both clear. And so if someone else came in, we'd have to say, okay, for variance 420, for example, is this a Trenton? And we look at what the Trenton was in the record, and if it's not a Trenton, regardless of the builder, the variance does not apply.
Okay, it's exactly to the percentage. They figured it out, what they're going to put there. They're a big builder, been in business for a while, and, um, it looks like we're going to have a neighborhood built out in no time. So there has been a motion made and seconded to approve the eight variances as recommended, with no future application will be accepted in Emerald Meadows. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Come for Capes?
No.
No?
No.
I will say aye. Okay, motion passes. Okay, uh, street vacation, a portion of River Street right of way. And I will apologize for my comments earlier. I just, Keith, you live there. You look down at the narrowest point where the curb is, and it's only like about two feet, and it's a sheer wall right up, maybe three feet, and it's a sheer wall right up, because they took out the old road that came down. So that's why I was like, I don't think. So that's why I was like, I don't think we're ever gonna get a sign through there. That was my whole point. And you live there, so I'm gonna ask you to speak a little bit, because you're pretty quiet tonight.
Uh, yeah, I mean, that's, it's the same, I mean, you know, the biggest thing is, it's, it's getting built out down there. There's not a whole lot that can be built down there, so. Uh, and everybody, it, it's a road that goes, it's a dead end road. It seems like people drive too fast sometimes, but that's just the way it is, because everybody's walking down there and it's just kind of slow and easy down there. A lot of people drive super slow down there. Uh, you know, I, I can't see anything ever being done with that hillside other than helping out the houses up above.
You know, Keith, we're talking about getting a bypass road up through the fill area behind the, uh, trailer park, if you would. So at one moment, it won't be a dead end road. Uh, again, we have a bad habit of doing something for this couple of years and ten years or thirty years down the road. It comes up and bites us.
I think that goes both ways. Some are good and some are bad.
I have a question for the city planner. Um, can you do a street vacation and not allow the house's footprint to expand? Or is it a vacation or not a vacation?
Yeah, I, I don't think we can condition an approval of a street vacation on their future building plans.
Okay, I have another question.
Okay.
Um, they, they said they're not asking for setback variances just to make, because I knew when she came in and talked about the building right on the sidewalk, if their house burnt down, they'd just be out of luck because of the situation with the planning. But because of what they're doing, their house can never go further than where the gazebo is, because that's where the setback is, right? It just puts their gazebo inside their property line. Is that right?
Yeah, right now, it's in the right of way. It's an encroachment. The, if the, the street vacation, if granted, would pull it out of the right of way, but not into compliance with setbacks.
Okay.
The porch, the dual level porch is a different story. That would then be in compliance with the setbacks. But that gazebo structure would still be, um, not meeting the rear setback. It's actually-
So in order for them to build bigger in the back, they're gonna have to come back to the planning commission anyway.
Yeah, and it's a weird case, because they have a dual frontage lot, which means they have two front setbacks, and our front setbacks are the largest, so it's, it's twenty feet setback on both sides.
I know they struggle with parking there, and when she came in to get permission to tear down that little shed building, it was like they struggle, because they have to make sure that they don't have both that family visit on the same night, or they can't get off the street. And so, I mean, I think some of it is trying to relieve some of the parking issue and make the house more livable for them and for whoever lives later. You know, it's to maximize our beautiful view. I don't think it's a bad idea. And like the others, I used to, when I lived on Fourth Street, I used to walk that walk with my dog a lot. And the other side of the street is much safer sidewalk or no, because those trucks with their fishing trailers come barreling through there and you don't want to be anywhere near them. Yeah, they want to be away from the fishing trailers. Stay on the other side of the road.
Counselor Carlson, I agree with you, a hundred percent. However, I'm confused and a little bit baffled why the neighbors on one side and the neighbor on the other side is asking for that vacation as well, because they don't have a gazebo that is-
The issue with, the reason why they did that is because planning, just for map's sake and for variance and for street rightaways, you don't want it to look like the toothless jackal-
I understand that. Why don't they just take a line all the way down to Keith's house then? I mean, I don't get it. Why just those three houses then?
I, I mean, they asked their next door neighbors per staff's recommendation. So I'm not sure if the other people weren't interested, or if they just thought just their two next door neighbors were enough. Does that take it to the corner, or does, what is the apartment?
No, I don't, I, I, it was just, it was just a thought. I'm trying to figure, I'm trying to think about that motivation of why they went out. The guy was very clear of what he wanted to do, why he wanted to do it. Uh, and he won me over in a sense with that explanation. I thought it was very thorough and I, and, and I followed it. However, it didn't explain, it somewhat explained the straight line. And, uh, but the straight line is still be a straight line for three lots. It, then it starts to-
Yeah, because we can't steer with dots. One more bigger?
Doug, a little bit, probably a little clarification on that is, is you just kind of want to be the same position as your neighbor. The other part is, is all of those houses along there have been taking care of that ground for eons. And so it's just a matter of, if I'm taking care of this ground, why isn't it, why doesn't it belong to me?
Uh, Keith, uh,
You're welcome.
Keith, I want to ask a question just about that. In some cases, if you take care of public ground and the public doesn't say anything, it becomes your ground. Is there such a law in Oregon about that?
It, it's actually your ground to start with, Steve, because the right of ways were taken from the property owners.
Oh, I, I, I understand that. But many places, if there's a public piece of ground and you're taking care of it, and once a year or something like that, the city doesn't impose itself on its own ground, it becomes your ground. That, this is like, uh, Radio City, uh, Music Hall in downtown New York is owned by Columbia University. And to make sure it stays their property, they close off the street for one day. Under New York law, that stays their property. I just wondered if there's an Oregon rule about if you take care of public property for a period of time where the city doesn't contest it, is it your property? That was, that was the question.
I hope there is, Steve.
Well, if it is, we don't have to worry about it. It's their property already.
Yeah, if there is, I want to take care of a public park, please.
But if you put a city mower in there once a year, they kill the interlions, it's still city property. But if you don't, it becomes their property. That's,
Yeah.
as I say, that's a piece of land law that I'm using conditions on the other side of the country, and I wondered if the same thing goes here.
Counselor Topaz? Um, I have not heard of that. And I've worked for two counties, three cities, um, and my career's nineteen years so far. I have not heard of that. And I think that's why we have a street vacation law. And, and, and what's, the city does not have a whole lot of vacation rules on our books. We're extracting, um, everything being presented, um, straight from the Oregon revised statutes.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, because as I say, I've seen this other places. That was, what is the Oregon statutes on this? That was the question.
One other question, what staff, uh, what's the, what's the staff ruling on this? What's the staff, how's the staff leaning on this?
Staff recommends approval with the utility easement on the ten foot Easter, Easterly portion.
I liked hearing the good word from the advocate on staff being very helpful and knowledgeable in assisting them through this process. Because it can be cumbersome, trust me.
And, and Counselor Morton, um, you asked about the, the adjacent parcels and
Yes.
our recommendation wasn't necessarily, you know, just those two. It was to bring others in to try to make a more complete, um, vacated right of way. And they were, just happened to be able to get the two adjacent ones to agree to it.
Okay.
So, another piece of information that years ago, we talked about, I mean, because our forefathers, you know, were great looking at our eighty street, eighty foot right of ways. But most of that is wasted space and we're not collecting any taxes on it. So, I mean, it's good to have them where you're needed, but if they're not needed somewhere, you're, you're losing tax money on that land.
Okay, so would somebody, uh, flirt with a motion on this?
I'd like to make a motion to approve with staff's recommendation.
I'll second that.
Yeah, motion's been made and seconded to approve the street vacation of a portion of River Street right of way as staff has recommended. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Counselor Lopez, did I, did not hear you. Is he on here anymore?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I'm worried about three years from now.
Did you say aye?
I said nay.
Nay, okay.
Nay.
Nay. Two days, okay. All right, so we're gonna move on to this portion.
What was the vote on, what was the vote on that?
It was, uh, four to one.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, if I could butt in here on the, uh, the first reading of the ordinance there. That, that ordinance I meant to bring up earlier in our workshop meeting. There was some dialogue between both the council, our legal council and the council for the Fat Beam LLC. Actually, from the LLC Fat Beam. They'd like to pull that off the agenda, have some more time to work on it.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, so we're gonna go right into the resolution then. Okay, Resolution eighteen ninety, Resolution authorizing the transfer of interim amount of fifty thousand between the general fund and fiscal year two thousand nineteen.
Will we approve Resolution eighteen ninety?
Second.
Hey, motion's been made and seconded to approve Resolution eighteen ninety. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We get a vote from everybody or not? Everybody said aye? Okay. Resolution eighteen ninety-one, Resolution authorizing the transfer appropriations within the fund for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
Will we approve Resolution eighteen ninety-one?
Second.
Hey, motion's been made and seconded to approve Resolution eighteen ninety-one. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Resolution eighteen ninety-two, a transfer resolution to change appropriations for fiscal year two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty.
Will we approve-
Resolution number eighteen ninety-two.
Second.
Hey, motion's been made and seconded to approve Resolution eighteen ninety-two. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Resolution eighteen ninety-three, a resolution adopting the new city of St. Helens Personal Police Policies and Procedures Handbook superseding Resolution eighteen, or fourteen twenty.
I move we adopt Resolution eighteen ninety-three, item number seventy, as read.
Seconded.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve Resolution eighteen ninety-three. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, approve and authorize for signature.
Woo!
A.
That's a novel.
Uh, Amendment number ten to IGA with Columbia County for Communications Correction Work Crew. B, Extension of Agreement with McKenzie Engineering LLC. L, LC for new police station consulting. C, Extension of Agreement with Cannon Met for Pro Tem additional services. D, Extension of Agreement with Worldwide ATM LLC for ATM in front of City Hall Annex. E, Extension of Agreement with Mark Comfort for cleanup of various properties of the city. F, Agreement with Robert Cleveland for Pro Tem Prosecution Service. Agreement with Mackenzie Garage for Forest Management Service. H, Eastwood Senior Center, E, to operate the St. Helens Senior Center. I, Intergovernment Agreement with Port of Columbia County for Industrial Property Marketing Services. J, Agreement with Two Hauled for Department Administrative Service Assistant. Okay, we have one more, is that right, Kathy, to put on here?
Two more.
Two more. Could you, uh, tell me those and I'll-
Sure, it's a contract with CBM Systems LLC for janitorial services.
Okay, that would be L.
And M would be mortgage sublease agreement with WCP Incorporated.
Okay, so a motion's been made and seconded to-
Water, please.
Well, hold on.
Uh, uh, on this business with, uh, the charm business, it seems like there's no definitive action of what they're doing. Uh, it's basically a friendship handshake. They could be taking stuff off that property. We don't, I see no double checking on that business. I would really have a problem with what's going on there.
With, uh, which one? What are you talking about?
That's with E, uh, Mark Comfort.
I have to disagree with you there, Steve.
Well, I haven't seen anything on paper, so I can't tell you a thing about it. And I don't see any words that they pass their scrap across our scales, so we have any record of what's going out. And if some of the scrap is going out under dead weight or under refurbishing or old sales, I sure would like to know what's going on.
Isn't he just doing nuisance abatement, John?
Yeah, that's what my, the, the work that he's doing more recently is cleaning up nuisance abatements directed by the city.
He's helping property owners. I actually had two property owners in the city approach me and thank us for engaging with Mr. Comfort, because they know him and they trust him and he's respectful. So that's feedback I'm getting with the nuisance abatement he's been doing.
I've had some other things, but things coming off the mill property, say a, a big valve body, dead weight four hundred pounds. Ten cents a pound's a lot of money. As a rebuilt valve, you're talking about sixty thousand dollars. I sure would like to see, you know, weights going to scales.
Differentiated, you mean?
Yes.
So like, if you do no cleanup is one thing, and nuisance abatement is something else.
That's correct.
John and myself have actually walked through with Mark Comfort and Keith as well. Um, and know that there were some issues down there with a bunch of scrap on the partition that we are actually drawing up, right? And that he hauled away for us. And I don't know exactly where you're kind of going with this. I kind of do, but I, I, I'm, Mark is a very upfront businessman from what I know of doing with him. And if anything, if there's anything missing from down there, is Lucy came from Cascade thinking they own it, because we inherited some of that from Boise and Cascade had some of their stuff down there. So there's confusion on whose is what. We noticed a ton of metal being moved before Mark Comfort was ever in the picture.
Well, if he had a record, we at least could keep him clean. That's, that's part of the problem. But remember, we had a piece of cable, data cable that went out as a good piece, not as scrap. But there would be like a little better definition of what's going on, on paper and records.
So, and again, he works also for Cascade Tissue and he reports to John Walsh. And, and John, would you like to speak a little bit on that?
Yeah, I, I have a, an accounting for his expenses out there. You know, they're fairly dated now, because he hasn't been doing work out there for quite some time.
I mean, you can be a good friend to him and you can be a good friend to Rick, but, you know, I would like to do business, not friendship.
Uh, I'm really confused on that comment.
Yeah.
Really am.
If you've got a record of what's going off of there and the way it's scrapped.
It's a very weird night where, um, comments are made and taken out of context and put into context. It's a weird world right now, isn't it? Um, I don't know what else to tell you, Counselor Topaz, other than that John has the stuff that you're probably looking for.
So, I mean, my question is, is that we can still do business, but if John has an accounting, you just would like to see it?
That's correct.
Okay.
I can dig it up, so.
There is an accounting and John has it. But that's, it, does that answer your question?
Yes, I would have liked to seen that stated in this continuation, though.
It, the only reason why we're doing this is because we have to have the contracts have to continue over the year end.
Because it's for nuisance properties.
Right, is, everybody, everybody, all of, that's why the list is so long. Otherwise, people are unemployed on July, June thirtieth.
I, I, I agree, that, but I, as I say, I haven't seen any paperwork that that's what's happening. It only sounds like friendship when you look at this.
It could be, Steve, but the last several years I've been working with Mark out there, I believe he's one of the most ethical business guys in the county.
So, I, I trust him a hundred percent.
Still should be a record.
Just want the list. Okay, so have you read them all now, Rick?
I did, and you made a motion, somebody made a motion and a second. I can approve and authorize for signature A through N, because we had.
There wasn't a, a motion yet.
There wasn't.
Will we authorize for signature items eight A through eight N? As read.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve and authorize A, A through N, all in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And just as a FYI, if you don't answer, it's automatically a yes, Rick. Because I, I used to be quiet, I used to be quiet, and I got informed that if I wanted to say no, I had to say no, because otherwise I was recorded as a yes.
Okay.
So, this is why I.
Uh, interesting, I thought it was the opposite way.
Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify, if people really want to say nay, they need to speak up and make sure they get recorded, that's.
Silence is acceptance.
Okay.
Okay, consent agenda for acceptance, A, Plating Commission Minutes dated March or May, well, two thousand twenty, and Parks Trails Commission Minutes dated May eleventh, two thousand twenty.
Will we approve consent agenda for acceptance, nine, items nine A and B?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve consent agenda nine A and B, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda for approval, A, Council Work Session, Public Hearing and Regular Session Minutes dated May twentieth and June third, twenty twenty. B, Accounts Payable Bill List, C, Declared Surplus Property, Police Department Unclaimed Property.
Will we approve consent agenda for approval, items A through C?
Second.
And I have a question.
Okay, question, go ahead.
My question is, is, um, we've been talking about surplus property and liquidating things, where are we on getting rid of that stuff? All the cars that were taken out of commission and all the stuff, is it still stored somewhere because of COVID or?
No sitting at the mill.
It, it is still stored. We actually had to take, uh, some of the vehicles out of storage and use them during the demonstration last, last.
Oh, okay.
Before. Uh, but it is still, the, the vehicles at least are still down at the Boise yard.
I know that over the time I've been around, I know that a lot of times people complain that there's not enough places to put the good stuff, so it'd be nice, we got rid of the stuff we don't need.
Yeah, I agree.
Great, that's all I have.
Okay, so motion's been made and seconded to approve consent agenda A through C, all in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, uh, what do I have to report on? Um, well, so i- i- in the near future, we're going to be, uh, redoing our agenda here, and it's gonna align more with our goals. And I can see that will be on there, will be, uh, comment will be going to the evening session. Instead of the, the work session, uh, the work session, there'll be, um, we'll be doing some reports, uh, basically. Well, I'll go ahead and read it, because I can't prove it up here. I'm trying to read what it is, okay? And thanks to the whip of the city council, we have adopted strategic work for you. This plan will guide. Come on, guys. Hey, Melissa, I'm having a, uh, city council meeting. I might have to go inside. I don't think she heard me. Thanks to the city council, we have an optimistic strategic plan. This plan will guide the work in core goal areas effective and efficient organization, community and civic engagement, livability and safe community and economic development, development along reading. You're committed to moving forward in the line of strategic goal and continuously improving to better improve our residents. We have an opportunity to improve our efficiency of our work session. Goal number one. This is a great opportunity to better educate ourselves and our citizens. This approach keeps us transparent and holds us accountable to focusing resources on the strategies that best serve the needs and inspiring of the community. This approach makes it easier to communicate our work. We need support and partnership from across the community for continued livability, smart growth and prosperity. Here's some of the basic changes. We are going to shift, be shifting to more uniform, goal-based reports. Department reports will, will, will report to council on a reoccurring schedule. Rather than roundtable department reports, each department will be asked to give a spotlight update on progress towards meeting specific goal. City departments and commissions will be scheduled in advance to encourage citizens' participation and engagement. Our work sessions will remain a place to get better educated and ask questions. Council reports out to be conducted at the evening regular session. When we start this shift, department heads will be available for technical assistance, but they will not be required there. Um, there will be two, maybe three per meeting, and it'll be rotating to align with our goals, unless it's something hypersensitive. And this goes right with our goals, with a way of restructuring, a, a, getting down to brass tacks. There are two key messages for staff. No new work is required. A new easy to use template is available and during the shift, you're currently to the plan.
Hey, Rick, can you try speaking a little bit more into the microphone when you talk off to the side? Uh, we have trouble hearing you.
Okay. Uh, so, and then number two. You will be better able to plan and share your work with a regular reporting schedule. Council and public will be encouraged to ask questions in advance. So, this is something that we're actually gonna be shifting into in July, and we're gonna, um, we'll know that there'll be some areas that we'll want to tweak this, but, uh, this aligned with our goals and it's just a revamp of our council work session and kind of like what Patrick was talking about. More of the decisions that are made, we will not be making decisions in the daytime, it will be strictly work. And if they need attention, approval, they will go into the evening because we'll have public comment and they can be put on there if the public would like to, to testify or have input. So, when Patrick was saying that, I had to bite my tongue because I knew where we were going. And this is my decision and this is, I'm, I'm hoping that you guys will, uh, help me, help guide the staff and we, we get into making good policy and continuing to serve our community, uh, like we have been, a little bit more efficient and better. That's what this is about. So, that's what I have to report on, and that will be starting in July, so we'll see how it goes, okay? Well, Council President Morton.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Uh, one of the things that I'd like to celebrate is where, uh, what Public Works is doing with our transportation. Uh, Gable Road, uh, after, uh, my tenure on council of, uh, over a decade, is finally coming to fruition and, uh, it's just about there. I would say by, next week at this time, it'll be striped, uh, it should have everything done, all the paving, whatever. And that offers a tremendous sense of safety issues to not only our senior citizens who live, uh, on that road, but the children who, not children and young adults who go to high school, uh, have safe passage from their neighborhoods to this, to and from school. Uh, and, uh, it looks like the traffic is, uh, the traffic lanes are going to be wide enough to, uh, uh, have safe passage throughout that. Uh, it's gonna be remarkable, and, uh, what an, what an improvement that is. To follow up on that, I'm encouraged to, with the, uh, uh, we were talking earlier about the Emerald, uh, uh, job site on, uh, Vernonia Road, uh, and that's going to be, uh, really impressive when we get sidewalks on both sides, and I think Sue reported on that today. Uh, and that's what's so exciting, to achieve those goals in our, in our public works. The other, the other, uh, uh, thing is with, uh, parks and trails, we're talking about connectivity and, uh, the, the, uh, the parks people are, are, and, 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 uh, uh, pedestrian people are busy at that. And so, uh, I like that, and what they're doing with their, uh, uh, with the master plan as well. They want to, they want to redo the master plan and they're looking possibly for a consultant to help them with that. So, that's a very busy, very busy commission, and so, uh, Parks and Trails is, uh, uh, on task achieving their goals, and, uh, I certainly, uh, have to apologize for the Veterans Park in the shape that it was in, left in. Uh, I contributed heavily to that finance of building that. And I contributed a, a lot of enthusiasm from the get-go, and one of the reasons I am so fond of that place is that I got drafted from this place in nineteen sixty-six and served in Vietnam until sixty-eight, so that wall is very dear to me. The squad that I trained with, half of them were lost in Vietnam, their lives are lost. The other portion of that squad that I trained with, uh, came back, uh, kind of in pieces. So, yeah, I've had, I have that dear to my heart and I go over there and I see those weeds growing out and I have, uh, I have, uh, I get kind of shaken on that. So, one of the things that I thought about when , uh, Patrick was, uh, giving his testimony was, you know, I tried to start a friends group of Nob Hill Nature Park and Dalton Park, and that, that's starting to take off. And I think I will, and there's so many volunteers in our community, but I think I'll go to start going to the veterans meetings on Thursday night over at the Elks and see if we can drum up either through the Elks and or through, uh, the veterans group, some volunteers to, uh, help clean up their, uh, their own facility, their place, uh, of, of monument. And, uh, I, I just, I think that that's, I think that's real important. Anyway, that's my, that's where I'm gonna go with my goal of trying to, uh, keep that Veterans Park, uh, in top shape uh, as much as I possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you to the youth council for pulling. Okay, uh, Counselor Locke.
Uh, just a little addition to that, uh, yeah, I want to thank the youth council, doing all the little projects they do. Good job, Jenny, for taking them, keeping them moving and working out in my community. Good for them. Uh, one thing I was gonna say is, may we need to look at some, some decorating things over there that, that don't need any upkeep. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of landscaping you can do that doesn't, needs very little upkeep, so may need to look into something like that. But, uh, I'd like to, uh, spend my time, my thanks given to the police department for the job they've done the last couple of months, especially a couple of weeks ago when we had a demonstration here. Uh, we're one of the few cities that had nothing happen during our demonstration, and we owe a lot of that to our, our chief. It was one of the reasons we hired him is because he has a lot of experience in that type of stuff, and, uh, it, it paid off. So, I want to thank the chief and, and his staff, they've done a great job and they're doing a great job keeping up with the COVID situation and everything, so, uh, everything's looking good. That's all I got to report, thank you.
Thanks. Counselor Topaz.
Well, things are moving, we have all the churches and all the bells that we've been ringing for the last five years have okayed again. In fact, I think, uh, we've even gotten the mayor to dress up like Uncle Sam. Uh, there's gonna be, uh, was possibly gonna be some musicians to be on the plaza to, uh, also celebrate the Fourth. So, guess what's going on?
I like it. Love the Fourth of July, it's my favorite holiday. Counselor Carlson?
He had a couple of things, um, I know that we've, there's been a lot of, people's moods are raw right now, apparently. Um, people are worn weary from COVID and all of the conflict in the news. And I just really appreciate, I had a whole list of stuff, but I really appreciate the march and the conversation that they had a couple of weeks ago, and I appreciate that we were able to have that in our community peacefully. I was shown a flyer for an event this Friday that they're having down there in the evening. And I would ask that although our community is predominantly white, we do have minorities. People have, people with special needs in our community that can make up a significant portion of our, a significant portion of our population, and I would ask other council members, other departments, to look at what they're doing and look at ways that they could be more inclusive. How could they, you know, change the way they're doing that, that would be more inclusive of those people that feel left out? Um, I looked at the census and it's near ten percent of people in our community identify as Latino, and I wonder if there's even an option for somebody to access our meetings in any other language other than English. And, you know, it's just trying to look at those things, not saying that we need to change today, but just in the future to be looking at, how do we make our community more welcoming to all? I'm just hearing so many people living in our community three, four, five years that say, I haven't met anybody, nobody talks to me, and that kind of thing. And it's like, I just challenge all of us to be more welcoming to our neighbors, more welcoming to businesses, and be more willing to listen as opposed to always assume we have all the answers. Um, the, the neighbors on First Street that asked for the street vacation, um, they face First Street, isn't that First Street where they are? River Street's where they want the vacation. Um, I've met them just in the last two years and they all got to know each other and they do stuff together and they share holidays li- with neighbors. That's something that I haven't seen people do since I was a little kid. And it's like, I think that this COVID has reminded us that things that are really important are not the things that come in stores. So, I just would challenge departments to look at ways that maybe our practices as a community are leaving part of our population out. And I just, I hope that we as a community will look at, I know Margaret's super innovative at providing programming at the library, and we're super innovative at finding programming to reach out to these people. Years ago, we did some movie screenings and we were good enough to have Counselor Morton review them, and maybe there's some educational speakers or some movies that can be screened and things that we can start having those conversations that will create a connection and a healing in our community, because I, I hate hearing so many people not feel welcome. But, um, I just appreciate the youth council, of course, and, you know, everybody works so hard for us because all the city employees still went to work and they still did their jobs, and I appreciate them for doing that. But, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue, and your whole team, because I can only see your face, I can't see anybody else, but thank you for the guys all being out there cutting the brush and doing their jobs and still showing up every day, you know, not staying home, not, you know, calling in sick, but still getting their job done, and it's very much appreciated, and you know, the unsung heroes that work behind the scenes to make our community keep going, so I just, it is a good place. It's sad to hear when you're proud of your community to have people say hurtful things about it, and I just, I think we could be our better selves. That's all I got. Happy, free Fourth of July, because we won't meet again before Fourth.
The independence of our great nation. Okay. Department reports. Lieutenant Hoag.
Good evening, nothing to report.
Okay. Steve Nelson.
Um, I, I don't have anything else to report this evening. Thank you, and thank you, Counselor Carlson. I'll pass those words along to the crew. They, they do work hard.
Okay. All right, let's go to Margaret Jeffries.
I don't have anything more tonight. Thank you.
Yep. Matt?
I'm good.
Doug's waving? Hi, Doug. Um, Kathy?
I have nothing more, thank you.
Hey, John Walsh?
Just about wore everybody out there. The, uh, I was, as we're going through the resolutions here, adopting eighteen ninety-three, I was reflecting on the fact that it was superseding Resolution fourteen twenty, which is four hundred and seventy-three resolutions to be for it. The amount of people like, uh, that have been here long enough to see that and probably a lot, a lot more than that, so. We can get a lot of work done here at city, so.
Okay, so any counselors that have any questions on what I talked about? If you, if you have any questions for me now, but in the future, it's just a, it's not a bunch of changes, but it's a structural change. It's worth it.
I had one kind of go back. When, when do you think we will be in face-to-face meetings?
I would like to shoot for July and this is one thing we can get with going to this structure. We limit staff in there, we should be all do social distancing because this actually is going to have like three, um, highlighted rotations. It's pretty much a six month, every six month that they rotate unless it's something hypersensitive that's on our radar. Okay?
Yeah, because I just, I think that we benefit from working through some of the projects. I think sometimes we all feel like we missed a piece of paper or we missed a conversation because we're not all in the same room. So we definitely benefit from being in the same space.
Yes, yep. I agree, so would you guys like to try to do social distancing next? The, the July, whatever, what date is it?
The middle of July, whatever date that is, I haven't turned my calendar.
It is the fifteenth. Would we like to try to meet down at council chambers? I know Gappus has already started doing theirs, apparently. So, totally up to you guys. I am ready.
Have conversations between now and then, if Matt and John can work it out.
Well, no, uh, I'm asking you guys right now to make.
I want it to happen, but I mean, I want to make sure that it works with the social distancing.
It will.
We can do it.
We, it will work. We can definitely, we can actually have people, if they wanted to come in, um, they could notify us just ahead of time for the evening session for public comment. We can do it, yep. Okay, so let's, let's schedule it for council chambers and if you, um, are sick, don't show up, you're excused. We only need three of us to have a forum, so, all right. That being said, we are adjourned. All right. All right. Everybody have a?